We'll go ahead and call the regular city council of the city of Temple City meeting to order June 2nd, 2020 pursuant to section three of executive order N 29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020. Cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. Before we begin the meeting, I just want to remind those who are calling in that your microphone will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agendized item discussion. You can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templicity.us. Do that now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment upon. Okay, so I will call the meeting to order again. And Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist? Absent. Councilmember Viscara?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought Cindy was here with us. I could have held off. Brian, do you know where Cindy is?
Actually.
Oh, that's right. That's right. She's not going to be joining. I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Had a brain freeze for a minute there.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here. Okay, do we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Sternquist?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to excuse Councilmember Sternquist for cause.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Any objection? So ordered. Okay, we will now move on to the invocation. I will be providing the invocation this morning. So if all of you will please join me in prayer. I was thinking today that, boy, our, our city, our country, our state, we, boy, do we ever need prayer right now for so many different reasons. So, oh, God, listen to the cry that rises from every corner of this fragile earth, from our human family torn by violent conflict and the terrible pandemic sweeping our world. If peace in our time, grant our world leaders the wisdom to see beyond the boundaries of race, religion, and nation to a common humanity. To those who have taken up arms in anger or revenge, even in the cause of justice, grant the grace of conversion to the path of peaceful dialogue and constructive collaboration. Please, God, remember to watch over our first responders, continue to protect them and to keep them safe. And God, please bring peace to us all. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, if we'll all stand for the pledge of allegiance, we've got a flag right in front of us. Thank you, Peggy, for providing to that. Okay, so ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Liberty and justice for all.
For all. Okay, thank you.
All right. The Republic for each stands.
Thanks. So, you know, in, 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 in regular times, I probably would have been saying that about three or four times a day over at the Little League field as we were preparing for our tournament game. So how, how things change sometimes. So, thank you very much for that. So we will now move on to item number five, our ceremonial matters, and tonight there are none. And so now we will move on to item number six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. City council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. The procedure to address the city council is highlighted on the first page of the agenda. So I'll first begin by asking our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak at this time.
Mayor, there are no email requests for a public comment.
Okay, thank you. And now for those who are calling in, we will now unmute your microphones. In order to avoid callers from speaking over each other, please state your name so that you can be added to the public comment list. The city clerk will call upon you when it is your turn to comment. Please be reminded that you have up to three minutes to speak. So do we have anybody on the line that wishes to speak at this time?
Peggy Miller.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller. Go ahead and you can go ahead and start speaking.
Um, I thank you, Mayor Chavez. I recently sent in an email to the city clerk as well as the city manager to address the council as well as yourself regarding the funding that the council is about to make a decision very soon as to how to utilize those funds. I had written an email requesting the council to consider allowing the funding to go to rentals who are suffering through the pandemic COVID-19. And I was hoping that that was read by the council members as well as our mayor.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for those comments, Peggy. We, we, as you know, we are not, that is not on our agenda this evening. I believe it will be on the agenda next meeting, I believe, Brian. Is that correct? So, so that will be today is the second, so that'll be on the 16th. That matter will be heard. And so I would urge you, if you want to listen in and speak during that time, you're more than welcome. But thank you for those comments tonight. Okay, is there anyone else on the? I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the line that wishes to speak at this time? Hearing none, I will close public comments. We will now move on to item number seven, the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended, unless removed for further discussion. If members of the city council or persons in the audience wish to discuss any matters listed on the consent calendar, please address them at this time. Okay, so I will again ask the city clerk if there were any email requests to speak at this time.
Mayor, there are no email public comments, but I do have one email comment.
Okay, on the consent calendar?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. We'll hold off on that. We'll probably get to that. Okay, so is there anybody? So why don't you go ahead and unmute the microphones? If any of those are calling in, anyone calling in at this time wished to speak on a matter on the consent calendar? Okay, hearing none. Before we hear a motion, I would like to pull item number B from the consent calendar, the update on the fireworks permits. And so, let's see, I don't, Madam Clerk, is the matter that you have the email request, is that on item B?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so why don't we, at this time, unless there's any other matters that wish to be pulled, if we could get a motion to approve the consent calendar other than item B at this time?
I'll move to the consent calendar other than item 7B.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Right there.
Thank you. I forget, Greg, do we need a roll call on this?
Yes, we have a resolution. So yes, we do.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right. So if, Madam Clerk, if we could have a roll call on, on the consent calendar other than item 7B?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Sir, you're muted.
You know, you're, you're muted. You need to unmute.
Right, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you for that. So why don't, before we get started, why don't you go ahead and, and read the email that we received on this matter?
Thank you, Mayor. This email was received by Mr. Jerry Jambezi. Good evening, Mayor Chavez and Councilmember. I would respectfully request you pull item 7B from the consent agenda tonight. With all that we have and continue to go through as a city with COVID-19 worldwide pandemic and the recent civil unrest, in my opinion, our city staff, sheriff, and fire personnel should not be subjected to further stress. The recent health order has classified the sale of fireworks as a low, lower risk retailer. I would disagree with that assessment. In all reality, TNT fireworks will benefit the most from the continued sale of fireworks in our city. I understand our youth group benefit financially from this, but now would be the time to find an alternative source of income. In recent years, TNT fireworks have taken more of the profit, leaving our youth group with less and less. A majority of cities in Los Angeles County ban safe and sane fireworks, according to the county fire department. In the county, 49 cities and all unincorporated area banned fireworks. Thirty-nine cities permit safe and sane devices, those that do not explode or fly. Each year valuable resources are needed to curtail the illegal fireworks that explode and fly. Our city has suspended temporarily parking fines. Are you willing to do that for illegal fireworks? I would like you to consider the effect of fireworks on animals and also our veteran, veterans suffering with PTSD. There must be a reason that 49 out of 88 cities do not allow fireworks. Please give this your careful attention for the well-being of our citizens. Sincerely, Jerry Jambezi.
Thank, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Jambezi, for your email. So that I don't incur the wrath of our city attorney, I understand that, and we all understand, that tonight's matter 7B is basically a, an update on fireworks permits that we have previously granted or approved. However, in reading the staff report, I do have a couple of questions about the report. And so I think I'm still within the agendized item. And those questions are as follows. The report refers to a, a revised health order that was given to TNT on May 26. And however, in the report that we have, it doesn't specifically go into what that checklist of protocols that was provided to them. Did we, did we get that checklist? And is there anything that perhaps, Mr. Cook, that you can expand on in that particular area? And then the second question I have is, it appears to me in the report that the county has, unfortunately, they, they tend to do quite often, is to kind of pass the ball. And I take it, I'm reading this report, that they basically have told TNT that, of course, they don't issue permits for fireworks stands. And I'm assuming that they're basically saying that's up to each individual city to decide one way or another. So those are my two questions. I don't know if you can answer those now, or maybe shed some light on those two particular subjects.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. I will try. And Mr. Reimers and Mr. Murphy can interject when necessary. This is true, the health, the health order is what dictates, and there has been a subsequent health order as well, related to all retail except for high-risk retail. Fireworks stands and sales do not fall within that category according to the health order. The health order in the health department on their website has a list of protocols that they provide in which it is allowable for a retail establishment, temporary or otherwise, to operate within the county of Los Angeles. It is incumbent upon those businesses to meet those protocols, do that, but in essence, if we're not high-risk, which fireworks stands do not fall under that category of high-risk, you may operate as long as you follow those protocols. The permit application that the county is correct, every city in LA County must submit a permit application as we did, and was approved by the council prior. I don't know if I'm, if I'm missing something, Mr. Reimers or Mr. Murphy, please fill in any gaps.
No, that's correct.
Thank you.
So does that conclude your report then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, so I guess we have to go to the, to that website and look up those things. I can't remember, I thought maybe staff or someone had sent those to us, or I saw it somewhere, perhaps it was in a letter from TNT, perhaps. Has TNT shared with the city what they're going to do about these protocols, or how they're going to accomplish them in any way?
They provided us, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Reimers, a prototype of a typical booth, and the manner in which interior-wise, they would ensure all the protocols of social distancing and otherwise, and how they would do some basic queuing near and near and around the booth. That was correct, Mr. Reimers, right?
Yes. So the county's proto, retail protocols are about five pages long, and then separate and apart from that, TNT fireworks submitted a specific protocol plan for their booths and how they would be run, from giving people the opportunity to place orders online, and then to provide social distancing protocols while in line, post flyers for the people who are working in the booth, how they would educate people working in the booth, and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Reimers.
Okay. And there, did they say that they would meet with the individual groups and go over those? Who is going to be policing these protocols? Is that going to be up to us to do that? TNT? Combination of both? Any light in that regard in that matter?
I'll take the first stab at, I'll take the first stab at this, and Mr. Reimers, feel, feel free to jump in. The county health order dictates what those protocols are. If we are seeing a violation of the protocols or otherwise, at this point, we would let them know that they're not, they're not abiding by those. The process of a revocation of a permit or anything like that later, that would be a pretty significant step in terms of dealing with them. We would, as with the health order across the board with LA County, we would try to educate, we would call the health department if we saw an egregious violation of that as well.
And what would the healthcare department do?
The healthcare, the health department, as it has with several of, several businesses that have gradually opened over the last few weeks, would have the ability to shut, under the emergency orders, would have the ability to shut down a business that was not complying.
Okay, anything for Mr. Reimers to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that before the, the nonprofits take over the booths, they, they meet with TNT fireworks. TNT fireworks provides specialized training just on how to run the fireworks stand. And within that time, they were going to tell the different nonprofit groups how they were to operate under the COVID-19 health orders.
Is there any discussion between TNT or anything that they provided to the city that indicates who is going to be paying for, I assume, the, the mask and the cleaning and all the things that go into meeting these protocols?
No, we haven't received any information about whether the nonprofits would be paying for it or whether TNT would be.
Okay. Well, that's all I have. Is there any other council members that have any questions regarding this particular matter? Hearing none. Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just had to receive an email from a member of the public who would like to speak about the fireworks. Is it for us to unmute the microphone?
Yes, go ahead. So we have a caller online.
Hi, Mayor Chavez. This is Jennifer Oberlander from T-Casa. We are concerned with the fireworks stands because since our seasons have been suspended, we don't have volunteers or staff to work the fireworks stands. And we're not the only organization. When speaking to the other organizations that have them, they're all worried about how it's going to be ran, too. And also, to my understanding, the nonprofits are the ones who are going to be paying for the hand sanitizer, the gloves, the masks, and so on.
So that'll be an added expense to you guys?
Yes. And at the moment, if for us at T-Casa, I see that we have maybe four people who are going to be able to work the fireworks stand. Usually, our fireworks stand is done by our All-Star families. But unfortunately, since All-Stars has yet to happen or may not happen, we do not have the resources that would be to work the stand. And I know that I saw Little League sent out theirs today, saying that the, that at the moment, we still have the fireworks stand also, but they don't have people to work either.
Well, thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, because we have parents who are concerned about working, because they don't want to get coached, and things like that.
Well, thank you for sharing that information with us.
Thank you for letting me.
Anything else?
No, thank you for letting me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, do we have anyone else, Madam Clerk?
No, sir. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, again, anybody from council wish to comment or anything on this matter? Hearing none. I just want, again, the reason I pulled this matter, and it's a very limited, as, as far as where, where it is on the agenda right now, it's a very limited issue. And, and I know that, I'm sure if I go any further, the city attorney is probably going to rein me in, because, and I understand the rules myself. So at this point, you know, we have a, basically, an information that's been provided to us. This is not the time to discuss, of course, whether there will be fireworks or not. That perhaps is for another day. But at this point, we have a, a, a receive and file, I believe, on this, on this matter. So with that, I will entertain a motion on item 7B. Then your microphone.
Yeah, all right, Ms. Miller. Mayor, I'll move to receive and file staff report on the fireworks update.
Okay, thank you.
A second?
We have a second. Any objection? I don't believe, Mr. Murphy, I need a roll call on this one, so.
No, sir.
All right. So that'll be so ordered. Yes, yes, go ahead, Brandon.
I just have a question. I don't know if it's appropriate or not.
Okay, I'll tell you.
Does this mean that we're going to be addressing the, the total issue of fireworks at a later need? Who's that?
Hold on, hold on. Okay, we have a caller on the line. I think we're going to have to mute that caller at this point, since we're no longer in the public hearing that has been closed. There has been a question posed by Councilmember Viscara. And to answer your question simply, there is nothing on our current agenda regarding fireworks, other than what we just had on the consent calendar regarding the report to receive and file. Whether or not that becomes an issue at some other point remains to be seen. But at this point, it is not on any current agenda. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item number eight, a public hearing, and there is none. We will now move to item number nine, and that is our unfinished business, discussion of options for ordinance 20-1041U, an emergency ordinance of the city council of the city of Temple City, temporarily preventing evictions of residential and commercial tenants arising out of financial impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. And so I will turn that over now to our city manager, I guess, to begin the discussion on item 9A.
Which in turn, Mayor Chavez, I will turn it over to the, the city attorney, Mr. Murphy. Your ordinance was passed. He will go through that and some, and an update, one of the recent executive orders by the governor and the county, and so forth.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy. It's all yours.
Thank you, sir. I know three of you know the background, but I'm going to put it out there for the public and for Councilman Viscara as well. Before I do, I, I would like to say that at the end of tonight's discussion, I see three options. Option one would be to leave your moratorium in place as it is. Option two would be to rescind or revoke the moratorium, which, for reasons I'm going to explain, would allow the county of Los Angeles moratorium to apply within Temple City. And option three is to give me direction to make modifications to the moratorium and to bring it back to you for adoption in a revised format. As background, we adopted this on March 31, in the very early days of COVID-19 crisis. We adopted it shortly after the county of LA issued an executive order by its board chair. We adopted it based on language that was being used in the cities of Pasadena, Glendale, and Alhambra, among others. And our purpose at the time was to provide Temple City residents and businesses with the same protections that were being provided elsewhere in the county. We didn't want Temple City residents and businesses to be at a disadvantage. And we also drafted the moratorium ordinance, basically substantially in almost every way, similar to what others, the other cities in the county were doing. And as I told you then, a big part of that was knowing that when your residents or businesses went to a judge to see if the moratorium was effective, the judges would have very likely already seen a very similar moratorium from these other jurisdictions. We also did it because it relied, as they say, it was taken right off, right from the county and the bigger cities, and it relied on certain authority given by the state of California. The moratorium was initially due to expire on May 31, but states in it that if executive order N 2820 is extended, then the moratorium will be extended for the same period as the order is. That was so that we wouldn't have to come back if we were in the ravages of the pandemic right now and decide whether to extend it or not. It was, you know, again, went along with what other jurisdictions were doing. We're now two months later. N 2820 has been extended. One of the issues before you tonight is, do you want to continue to have the moratorium move forward along with the state's stay-at-home order? Or do you want to set a date certain for it to expire, or set some other trigger for it to expire? There have also been changes in some of the nearby jurisdictions, including the county itself. And I want to lead you through some of those, because some of those changes may be appropriate for Temple City, and frankly, some may not. And that's a policy decision for you to make. And I'm going to take any guidance you give me tonight. If you do want modifications brought back, I'll take your guidance. I'll make that work for you, and I'll bring it back at our next meeting. But let me just walk through what the state has in place, what the county has in place, and what Temple City currently has in place. The state has actually two orders, 2820 and 3720. Both of those were extended last Friday by order 6620. 2820 did two things. It authorized local agencies to issue moratoria covering evictions related to COVID-19 financial issues. And it suspended for 60 days causes of action in the courts for unlawful detainee or and other actions that could evict tenants. So what it did was it gave you the ability to adopt a moratorium, and it also directed the courts not to take those actions, whether you did or not. The qualifications, the tenant must have been paying rent before. The qualifications, the tenant must have been paying rent before the COVID-19 crisis began. The tenant must give notice no later than seven days after rent is due, that the tenant can't pay for COVID-19 reasons, illness, layoff, furlough, childcare, the need to not work in order to care for children. The tenant must retain verifiable documentation to support its notice that it can't pay rent, and sixty days after the measure expires, the tenant has to come back up even on rent. The county, as I said, issued an executive order of the chair that was then formalized by Board Action on April fourteenth and extended and modified on May twelfth. That's a moratorium against residential and commercial evictions, both, again, related to the COVID-19 financial crisis. That also requires notice no later than seven days after rent is due, that the tenant cannot pay for COVID-19-related financial reasons. With the modifications and extensions, it now covers every jurisdiction within L.A. County, except cities that have their own moratorium. Under their moratorium, under the county's, the tenant has one year to come up to date on back due rent. When the executive order was issued by Supervisor Barker, they had six months. The changes that L.A. County found appropriate, one of them was to increase that period to twelve months. Your ordinance, again, a moratorium on eviction for non-payment of rent, residential and commercial tenants, both, just like the county, seven days' notice, lack of payment due to COVID-19-related financial reasons, six months to come back to date on back due rent. It includes a section, section seven, which outlines the types of proceedings to which it applies, and one of those proceedings is a no-fault eviction. A no-fault eviction is essentially says that the tenant has done nothing wrong, but there are a variety of circumstances in which the landlord wishes to move on and can begin eviction proceedings. It was our intention, when we included that section, again, based on a format that other cities were using, that that would be no-fault evictions as an attempt to get around a for-cause eviction. So the tenant could still show that they had given seven days' notice, that rent was, that they couldn't pay rent due to COVID-19 reasons, and thereby, they could rebut a no-fault eviction. Now, the county, in extending and modifying its ordinance, has said that all no-fault evictions are to be subject to the moratorium. That's a significant change. That says that anybody who is not not paying rent or not destroying property or otherwise creating problems cannot be evicted during the year that the moratorium's in place. As I say, that's a significant change, and one that the county thought was important, that the city may or may not think is important. I bring it up to you right now.
Let me interrupt, let me interrupt you there with a quick question, so that I can understand it. So, so are you saying that the L.A. County ordinance now says that or basically are saying that if or any, any, there can be no no-fault evictions any longer in the county?
Under the county's moratorium, that is true. So, and theirs will go, as of today, it goes until the end of June, plus one year for no no-fault evictions.
Right, right, one year to pay back, okay. Okay, so obviously, even under the county ordinance, and I believe under our ordinance as well, landlords may still evict a tenant for a breach of the lease agreement, correct?
Any breach of the lease agreement, except non-payment due to COVID reasons.
Correct, right, right, right. All right, all right, thank you. Go ahead.
I was simply gonna say that
I also asked a question related to that.
Go ahead, William.
Just maybe for clarification, so that we're, we all understand, can you maybe give us one example of what a no-fault eviction is?
Certainly. I'll give you a very easy example, and it's a personal one. When my wife and I were a young couple with two young children, we rented a single-family home. One no-fault eviction provision says that a landlord can move people out of rented property if it intends to have that property occupied by family members. Our landlord's son had purchased a portion of the home from our landlord and was looking forward to moving in. It was the time in life when he was gonna have a house. So our landlord gave us a no-fault eviction notice, you've done nothing wrong, but I need to move on. That's one. The second one that you see in multifamily projects most often is when they are either going to be converted into condos for sale, or when there's going to be such substantial renovation to the property that the landlord needs to get all the tenants out, and frankly, having done the renovation, they're going to try to increase their rental income. Those are, those are the big ones.
Okay, and just to make it clear, you're saying, in effect, that the revisions that the county recently made would have covered and not allowed someone to do that. The landlord, can I ask you to move if they wanted to move a family member in?
That is correct. The county has explicitly stated that that is covered by their moratorium. And so, a concern that we may have with our moratorium, since ours is taken from the county's original language, is ours might be interpreted to include that limitation, whether we want it to or not. And so that's one thing for the four of you to discuss. Do you want to cover all no-fault evictions? Or do you want to cover only evictions related to COVID-19 financial issues?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm looking through the rest of what I have. The county has also adopted a rent freeze, which, on residential residential units subject to any rent control within the county, the rent cannot be increased at all. Otherwise, as you know, last year's Tenant Protection Act does have some limitations on rent increases, but the county's adopted a freeze, and they have substantial resources for tenants in terms of referrals, advice, websites in multiple languages. So the new considerations, as I said, the governor, with respect to the state, the governor had originally had his, his moratorium in place until May thirty-one. Given the way that we are moving along through the COVID-19 response, he extended it for two months. The drop dead date now is July twenty-eight, because of the way he extended it, but that's what he's working with. The county is not relying on that full extension. They're not just tearing off of the state anymore. They're handling on a month-by-month basis, bringing it back, tweaking it if necessary, but doing it one month at a time. And then obviously, sir.
Are you just addressing the freeze right now? On increases?
No, everything. The county's doing everything on, their entire moratorium is on a month-to-month basis.
Okay, so there's no time limit on the, on freezing the rents?
They are freezing the rent. As of today, it's through the end of June, plus some some statutory period of time after that June date.
So that could go on and on?
It could go on and on, yes. Yes. And I will tell you that there are cities that are now considering, do they want to stop referring to the state orders for their termination date? Do they want to set a date certain, so that landlords and tenants alike will know when the moratorium expires? If so, do they want to stick with the six-month period of time to come up to even on rent, or do they want to make that longer? Or do they want to make that shorter? Do they want some clarification on other issues? Those are all policy considerations. I'm happy to answer any legal questions I have, but really what I'm looking for tonight is some guidance from you on what you'd like to see, so that I can bring it back to you, and you can take whatever action you need.
Did that conclude your report?
Sir.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and begin with council questions. I'm gonna call on each of you independently, and then we'll go from there. So Councilmember Mann, any questions for staff at this time?
No, I just, that, the one question I had, I just asked. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any questions for staff?
Yeah, I'm trying to formulate them. I'm having trouble. Well, real quick, I'm having trouble discerning between what we have in place and, and what the county is talking about.
Sure. So what we have in place is a moratorium, a ban on evictions of residential or commercial tenants when they cannot pay their rent due to documented COVID-19-related financial issues. The county has that same ban, but they have extended it in several ways. One way is they have also put a freeze on rents in rent-controlled properties. Another way, they've taken what for us is a six-month period of time for tenants to come back to even on rent, and they've increased that to a full year. When this was put out, the council generally appreciated the six-month period of time. It seemed like a fair balance between the landlord's needs to get back to even on what they were owed, and the tenants need to have some time to get back to even. But the county has decided that for their, their residents, a full year would be more appropriate. Those are the two main differences between the county and the city as of today.
I heard you saying that the freeze applied only to rent-controlled municipalities?
Yes, the absolute freeze applies only to rent-controlled properties. There is another law that was passed last year that limits the amount.
That doesn't affect us then, right?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
Correct.
And the no-fault issue?
The no-fault issue comes from essentially a drafting issue. When the when the moratoria were originally drafted, we wanted to make sure that a landlord could not use a no-fault eviction to try to get around the ban on evicting people with COVID-19 financial issues. But the provision has been interpreted by some lawyers, in particular, some landlord, landlords' rights lawyers who've gone to other cities and have said, we think this provision is broader. We think it stops any no-fault eviction, and we don't think it's fair. So in light of that, I wanted to bring it up to you before any landlord rights lawyer sent a letter to Temple City to let you understand what their thinking is, and if we want to make a change, we can make it. If we don't, that's fine, too. It really is a policy issue, but the question is whether we only mean for the no-fault provision to stop and end run around our moratorium, or whether we want the no-fault provision to cover any no-fault evictions in our city.
Is there a danger of our being stopped by any entity? If we decided to do that?
You know, they, I will say, three cities that I know of received letters threatening lawsuits. And I don't know the exact contents, because they weren't made public. Two of the cities are in the County of Los Angeles. Both cities, including San Dimas in our region, decided that they would rescind their moratoria and just let the county's moratorium apply to them, because they didn't want to get into any any litigation. The City of Costa Mesa, which had, again, a very similar moratorium, decided that they were willing to risk a lawsuit. So, is there a risk? Yes. An entity could come, could come at us, which is why I do want to bring it to you and let you give some guidance and put some thought into it. I think the risk of losing is fairly small, given the way that the moratorium reads as a whole. I think the people that are focusing on a very small provision in a much larger moratorium are misguided, but I'm not a judge, and ultimately, a judge would have to decide it, so I need to let you know there's some risk there, even though I think it's not a great risk.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, you?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, I want to clarify something in my mind. I mean, Mr. City Attorney mentioned about the danger of lawsuit. Wasn't the fact that because as this stands right now, our moratorium seems to be not as it's less restrictive on the landlords than they can. So I don't understand why it would increase our chance of being sued.
Sure, I don't think that what you have increases it. I will say what, I apologize, there's a lot to unpack, and I apologize for being unclear. I think that when this, when the county specifically said and began providing resources for all no-fault evictions, and they came right out and said that all no-fault evictions are covered by their ordinance, I think the risk for us went up slightly because our language came from their original language. And I think if we're going to make a change, it's a change where we can clarify language a little bit, if we want to avoid that small risk.
Oh, that small risk will come from people who want more protection for their tenants?
It could, or it could be from a landlord's rights group that frankly doesn't believe this is legal at all. One of the very first things that happened when this came out, a landlord's rights group said that they believed that Governor Newsom's entire order giving us this authority was illegal.
Well, I understand.
I don't know why we'd be the focus of that, but it's out there.
Yeah, I just want to understand the part that you referred to as increasing by a slight increase, so. I mean, I could see that tenant may more likely sue us by a small degree, but but likewise, if we go with the county, the landlord may sue us more, more likely than. So I, I'm not sure where that is a major consideration. I do, however, want to ask this question. This is before us tonight. Can, and if I'm reading the staff report correctly, if we don't do anything and allow the moratorium to stand, it will lapse on us by November thirty?
So, I had to go with the information that I had when we printed this last Thursday. It will not lapse that day anymore, because we've, the state extended from May thirty-one to July twenty-eight. So instead of November thirty, we're now in late January. Approximately January twenty-six or twenty-seven.
And the county's, they would be, again?
Currently, theirs is due to expire at the end of June, but they give a full month, so it would be all the way until June of twenty-twenty-one.
I see. Okay, the question I have then is that if the council chooses not to do anything tonight, and if the council member or the mayor felt a need to reexamine this, we can always bring this back, right? There is nothing that says we cannot bring this issue back.
I believe you can bring it back anytime up until it would have expired by its own terms. So as long as the mayor keeps, as long as we're before July twenty-eight, yes.
Okay. That's all, questions I have. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Well, excuse me, and and which agreement will we be operating under until that time? Until it came back to us?
You're you're operating under your own as it currently exists. Yours is in effect and will be in effect unless you unless we vote, I bring something to you and you vote to change it.
Okay.
Any other further questions? Thank you, thank you. So. It's ironic to me that these landlord rights. Lawyers would although. Rather than testing it before the court. They would go ahead and just file the lawsuit against the city that has the ordinance. But I understand the way the legal system works, of course. But to your best of your knowledge, there is. There has never been no courts that have decided any of these issues, I believe, correct?
No, no courts have decided. The governor's order has again extended. Extended a prohibition against any writs being issued. So the governor is going to go for sixty more days where courts cannot issue a bit to evict anyone. So this won't be tested until after. This won't be tested until after the governor's order expires and writs for eviction can, I I should say. Writs for eviction other than public health and safety issues like destruction of the property can continue to go forward. Right now, those are the only types that can go forward, and obviously, no moratorium is going to stop those anyway.
Now, it appears to me that the issue that seems to be coming back. Is this. This no fault eviction issue. That seems to be the kind of the main one that keeps. And. And I noticed in the report that there, as you said, there were some landlord rights attorneys that believed that the language. In in our ordinance. Is is, I guess. It's too broad, so it. The ordinance is too broad so as to prevent landlords from filing evictions for non-COVID reasons. Is that correct? That's their concern. And. Which which, in your opinion, of the. Laws that are in effect now, LA County ordinance or state laws? Back or clear up that situation?
Which would clear up?
Or which would make, which would satisfy. These so-called landlord rights attorneys. Basically, that, because I I go back to when we first discussed this, and to me. If I remember correctly, the intent. Was to prevent you to prevent evictions only related to the COVID nineteen. And and reasons, but that seems to have expanded, and the concern of the landlord's rights is that it it carries it further than that. So what does either of these? Ordinances, LA County or State, address those that specific issue perhaps better or more clearly than ours does?
Sure, so that the states does not address it at all. The the counties addresses it twice.
So they so they have no help to us, okay?
They don't help. The county does kind of the opposite of what we're thinking, which is they say that they say clearly that all no fault eviction ordinances are covered. What we would need to do would be to incorporate.
That would be to directly from, I think it goes back to, I think, what Vince was arguing or stating. The county's would be ordinance is. More restrictive of landlord's rights than ours. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. What I think we would do is incorporate some of the language from sections one through six. Into section seven.
Section seven of. One through six from the LA County ordinance?
No, just one through six just from ours.
Okay.
We talk at great length about this being a COVID nineteen related moratorium. But then in section seven, we talk about it applying to terminations. Including, and one thing in here is a no fault eviction ordinance. I think that we can modify the language in there to. Work our way through any. Issues that we're seeing brought. I can certainly take a look at a variety of. Local moratoria that have been slightly modified over the last couple of weeks.
Well, that was going to be my next question to you, and that is. You've done a great job of outlining what the LA ordinance is, the state ordinance, and of course, ours. I'm taking it that you have reviewed other local jurisdictions to see what they're doing and perhaps thinking about perhaps. Maybe looking at that in a way of perhaps incorporating some of that language into our moratorium. Is that correct?
I I, yes, I have. I I've seen some that have parted radically from what we have in front of us.
Right.
I can tell you that several several jurisdictions are weighing whether they want to get out of the moratorium business and just let the counties control. I can tell you that the city of Alhambra has decided that they want to stay in control so that they can make modifications as things move along. And yes, I would give, depending on the direction you, the four of you give me tonight, I'll find good language to. Make sure that it's very clear what what Temple City has in place.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have no further questions, so I'm going to go ahead and open up public comments, and I'm going to. First begin with our city clerk to check for any public comment emails on this matter.
Hi, Mayor. There are no email public comments, but we do have a caller requesting to speak.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and unmute the microphones at this time, and we will take the speakers who are calling in and. Speaker one, if you would mind identifying yourself and then go ahead.
Peggy Miller.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and City Clerk. This is a very sensitive subject for our family because we have a daughter with a disability. Who is currently a renter. So I had a few questions and concerns over this. It seems that. There's a lot of loopholes that the owners of these rent, you know, of these. Buildings who are renting to the public can use to. To possibly evict people who are suffering from the COVID nineteen and all the ramifications that they've gone through. So that's one concern, and my other concern is. You don't have to answer this, but this is my question. If there are any council members who currently own rental property in Temple City. My big concern is that they should not be making any decisions regarding this matter at all. And then my other concern is that. This term no fault eviction, I I feel again that this is something that if any landlord finds out about this, that they could definitely. Use that to their benefit and cause people to have to leave their homes. When they've already suffered financially, and I don't think it's fair, and I think that that should be taken into consideration. If you could please. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Do we have anybody else on the line who wishes to comment on this matter at this time? Okay, hearing none, I will close public comment on this issue. And now I will move on to the final comments.
By our. Mr. Mayor, can I respond just briefly?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, sir, and and I should have clarified this this earlier. With respect to city council members, Councilmember Sternquist does own rental property within the city. When this moratorium came to the city council the first time, we spoke with her. We made sure that there were no pending issues. The moratorium affects literally every residential and commercial rental property in the city. And so while she does have an interest, her interest was subject to what is called the public generally exception, which means that. Her interest was the same as any landlord's. In speaking with her prior to this matter coming to the council tonight. It was discovered that there is a more immediate interest at this point in time for her, and therefore, she recused herself, which is. Sir, the reason why she's not with us this evening. So she has followed the law in that regard. And Mr. Cook and I have made sure that that's that's been taken care of. So I I thank Mrs. Miller for her comment. And for reminding me to get that on the record for all of you and for the public. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to final comments. Councilmember Mann, any final comments on this matter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so I understand it, I know it's, like you mentioned, there's a lot to unpack. Through this, if I understand correctly, we have a couple of choices. If we. Let our ordinance lapse, we would in effect default to the county's ordinance. Is is that correct?
Actually.
Do we have to actively revoke our ordinance in order to?
Yes, so correct. Option one is to actively revoke to default to the county.
Okay, and and if and by doing so, we're essentially, the big change would be the six month now extends to twelve month. And then the no fault eviction, as specifically stated in the county ordinance, would. Be applied to to our city.
Correct.
Yeah, and and so that would be different than the way our existing ordinance is written. Which is not that specific about the no fault eviction, but however, to your point, you're saying it could be interpreted as. Covering that as well.
Very good. Thank you for thank you for unpacking it better than I did. You're absolutely right.
And and that means, if I understand, that means you're what you're saying is the way our current ordinance is written. Is open to interpretation. Because there's no deciding this right now by the courts. Okay.
I I don't I don't mean to interrupt you, but. I have to say this. Anytime you have a legal document, it's always open to a trial. Those darn lawyers, you know, I mean, they'll they'll interpret it. You you get ten lawyers, they'll interpret it ten different ways, but go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
All right, and and so I guess. There is one option where. If we keep our existing ordinance, we can actually choose to. Clarify how we're treating no fault evictions. Is that right?
Sir, the, yes, sir, absolutely. The two things, if if you want to keep. And you want to make changes, the two things I would ask that we talk about for changes are, number one, clarifying. Section seven and the no fault. Language, and number two, do we want to set a different termination other than continuation of statewide orders? For example, do you want to set a certain date as the when this will end? Do you want to have some county trigger? I don't think on March thirty first, we all thought that the unrolling. Process would be stretched out the way that we have now learned that it is. So I leave it to you. If you're happy with what you have for the termination, keep it. If you want to change it, please, please give me that direction.
Okay, and and currently, the way our our current ordinance is written is the termination is tied to. When the emergency is declared to be over.
Right, it it's not even the full statewide emergency. It's it's executive order N twenty eight dash twenty, which. Deals with our power to have this moratorium in place. And so at the time. Frankly, at the time, we thought it might go for a month or two more, and then for certain would be done. But that was two weeks into this, and now that we're two and a half months into it. I could certainly see that N twenty eight twenty going well beyond July, and which is why I want to bring to you. Since you really know Temple City and you know, does Temple City need some other trigger for this to to come to its end?
All right, thank you. So I guess in in my my final thoughts on this is. I don't think we should adopt the county ordinance. I'm of the opinion that. You should keep our own. We it seems like we have more control in it. I think during when we were asking questions, then Mayor Potem you alluded to that. There's nothing preventing us from. Bringing this back before the end of June to discuss, and we we know the situation is is fluid, so. Who knows, a week from now, something, another executive order gets issued that. Dwarfs this, and I wouldn't. I wouldn't want us to be kind of left at the whims of what the county and the state decides. I think there there should be clarification about the. The no fault eviction. As Mayor Chavez alluded to in his questioning. The intent of our urgency ordinance when we adopted it was to help those who are impacted by COVID nineteen. So I I think our ordinance should reflect the will of the council. As as discussed when we adopted that ordinance. Unless my colleagues have some other compelling reasons as to why we should change it at this time. And I also think our our current ordinance with the six month is a is a fair balance. Weighing various interests, and should things change that can, like Mayor Potem you alluded to, that can always be brought forth for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any final comments?
William used the end of June. Is that a, why is that a trigger?
I I don't think he's referred to June, but go ahead, William.
Yeah, I don't recall referring to the end of June.
Oh, that's what I heard. I'm sorry.
Really, anytime before July twenty eighth, you can revisit it and and make modifications to it?
Oh, yeah, I I'm sorry. Sorry for that. Yes, I I was alluding to the fact that if the situation changed in the next week. The ordinance, at least my understanding, is it can be brought back to be reevaluated should the situation. Arise.
We could also do that through July, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you. Mayor Potem, you any final comments?
Yes, but I will begin with maybe a question for the city attorney. The way I heard it was that our ordinance will lapse initially, I said, according to SAVR report, was November thirtieth, twenty twenty. And then I think you clarified it at Mr. City Attorney that it would lapse sometime in January twenty one?
Yes, sir.
Now, however, the way the county ordinance written is such that it applies to all cities without a city ordinance. Now, if and when the our our ordinance sunsets or laps. Wouldn't that automatically revert back to the county ordinance?
Sir, that's a very good question. We have asked the county a number of questions about these moratoria. And we're not able to get a very clear answer on that. We've gotten a clear answer that if we revoke our moratorium, the counties will apply. It's not clear what will happen at what for us is that six month point. Because. Technically, the moratorium. It's. It stops being in place when it terminates of its own accord. It's going to have effects that go out for six months, but the moratorium itself stops on its dead drop dead date. As of right now, July twenty eighth. Which is why I say we have until that date to make any changes, but after that date. It's. Its legal effect continues, but we can't touch it. That creates a question. I'm more than happy to study that. I don't know that the answer is going to be easy to find, and I didn't want to spend. I didn't want to send any. Law firm associate down that legal rabbit hole without. law firm associate down that legal rabbit hole without direct orders to do so, because that could be a long search. Um, but yes, I, there are people who believe exactly what you say, Mr. Mayor Protem, that uh when our six months are over, the county's uh, the county's period of time will go until till it terminates. I don't know that that's true. I don't know that it's not, um. But it's certainly a key point.
Well, uh based on what you just said, Mr. City Attorney, uh it's worth um perhaps for you to bring this back in the future. But in the meantime, for tonight anyways, for the um, the direction that um uh the the city staff is asking for, I I think I'm with um uh Councilmember Men, that we can probably let our our uh ordinance stand the way it is. And then I'll give you time and give um this city staff time to perhaps revisit that uh, that issue.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, um. Well, again, I get back to my comment in it earlier, and that is that it was my understanding that when we were going back and forth with this originally, uh we were looking for a, a fairness to both sides. Uh I think, I think uh certainly there are arguments, uh certainly for the tenant uh because of everything that's happened, but at the same time, I'm sure their landlords, many of them rely on this rent uh to basically support themselves, certainly have their arguments to make as well. It's always nice. Um, and I think, I think this council has shown that we in the past have tried to be fair to as many of the parties as we can. Sometimes we succeed, sometimes we don't. However, it does appear clear to me, based on the reports that we've heard tonight and based on the discussions we have, that there are certain parts of our ordinance that uh are not as clear perhaps as they should be. Um, and uh I don't think that's due any fault of any one person or persons, but lessons learned sometimes. I mean, this is a very uh unique time in our world, obviously. And we're kind of uh doing these things as we go. Um, and I would personally like to see us uh keep our ordinance. I'm not really a big fan of either LA County's ordinance or the state ordinances. I have uh some problems with the portions of each of those. Uh however, I do believe that our ordinance can be tweaked to the point and based on our, the advice of our attorneys. And I think um there, they will be able to do that and make it so that um it is clear for everybody and uh, and it does uh incorporate what the initial intent was, and that was to, of course, be fair to the party's concern. And also, of course, be clear as far as what their rights and what their rights are and what they are not. And that's really the essence of a good law, I guess you could say. Um, I would also like to control our date of termination. Um, I would like to see something more about, I I mean, as far as the triggering of these, I don't know that any of us know how this is going to be triggered. I think a lot of it depends on what happens with the COVID nineteen. You know, the last few days, it's, you don't even hear about it anymore, but it's still there. You know, there are other issues, of course, that it seems to happen, you know, all the time with, you know, yesterday's news. But uh it's not going away and it's still there. And of course, a lot of these issues that we're talking about now will continue until that, of course, uh somehow is overcome in some way. And although we have seen it, uh, you know, not go away entirely, but there are countries out there and there are states that are getting a pretty good hold on it. So perhaps that'll happen sooner than later in California as well. So um, my inclination in this case would be to uh continue with our ordinance, but direction to uh our city attorney and staff to um, to go back and take another look at this, uh keep it in mind, perhaps the best parts of the state, the best parts of the county, and also some of the things that other neighbors are doing that makes sense uh in our our community as well. Um, so that that's my two cents. So uh unless there are any further questions or comments, um. Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember Mann.
Yeah, just um, I have one administrative comment. Um. I know the staff report, the the information on there has changed since, you know, within the last couple of days. So from just an administrative standpoint, um will the staff report be revised to reflect those changes? Or how do we document that the staff report that's available now does not have the most up to date information?
Right, um, I can provide something for Mr. Haworth or other city staff to put on um, on the city's outreach page. And the staff report is what it is. The minutes will certainly reflect the changes, but I I understand you want to get information to the public. So I can work with Mr. Cook tomorrow and we can get something that can be put in the outreach pages uh on the website.
Yeah, just just in case there's someone that's reading the staff report and says, hey, how come what council is discussing doesn't? I mean, if they listen to every single word we say, they'll figure out that it's outdated, but um I just want our record to reflect that.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have what might be a naive question. If I may.
Go ahead, of course.
Does the state have the authority to impose its will on 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 the rest of us? At some point in time?
Y- yes, I mean, the the state, uh the they've been doing it in a lot of ways under the, the, their declaration of emergency. Um, when we initially adopted this, we thought a statewide moratorium on evictions more similar to what we drafted, that than what the governor has done was was a real possibility. Frankly, uh at the time, the federal government was talking about a nationwide moratorium on evictions. So um, yes, it's possible uh that they could, could drop something in that would uh, would supersede whatever we have.
Okay. And I was, I was telling Brian the other day, I, we, we better brace ourselves the way things are going. We're gonna, we're gonna get uh locusts next.
Oh, we need an earthquake.
You know what, you know what you guys need to do is you need to remove me immediately as mayor. And maybe all these things will go away. What do you think? All right. So um, all right, does anyone else need to, anybody, any other comments? Okay, is is someone able to perhaps uh frame a motion based on what our discussions have been? And and we can take a vote on that?
Uh, let me give, give a try, Mr. Mayor. I um, first of all, I agree with everything you said about um the the ordinance perhaps needing to be uh uh for um, quite refine and clarify a little bit. But but in the meantime, I move that we keep the our ordinance the way it is and um direct Mr. City Attorney and uh and City Manager to bring back in the future uh appropriate uh uh refinement to the current moratorium. And in particular, uh with some emphasis on determination uh of the ordinance.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Uh, is there any objection? Hearing none, I will, uh Madam Clerk, if you could please take a roll call vote.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protemu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you, uh everyone for that. Uh we will now move on to item number ten. New business, there is none. Item number eleven, update from our city manager. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. Uh just a couple items tonight. Uh, the planning commission has been meeting. Uh they've been meeting on go to meeting. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting as well as will the Public Safety Commission in the next month or so. Um, restaurants are opening per the county health order as well. We are trying to do our best to assist them. Um, as I described to you earlier the last week, I'll, I'll be using some of my uh authority within the confines of the law not to set a precedent to assist some of those restaurants if they request them and and some outreach as well to make sure they're operating. Um, driving around the city today, I saw several of our businesses before the curfew tonight opening and um trying to do their best to operate uh within the confines of the health order, which can be difficult for some of those businesses. But we will fa- try to find the ways in which to deal with that in an expeditious manner. Uh, another item that is coming up that um I would uh hopefully get some direction from soon is parking enforcement related to street sweeping. Uh, some communities are um addressing that issue. Uh, I I I take the direction to the council as to where we would want to go with street sweeping. And eventually, at some point overnight parking as well. But um, uh a- as of right now, uh all those things have been suspended. Um, but as this event continues to go on, probably even further than many of us thought, um and how it morphs and changes, I'll need some direction from the council. Uh, and lastly, related to um the events that have been happening over the last few days, I'd just like to thank LA County Sheriff's Department, our public safety staff and others who are out in the community right now in ensuring the safety of property uh and livelihoods and um and and uh people. So thank you to all of them. That's it for tonight, sir.
Thank you. Okay, uh number, uh item number twelve, update from our city attorney.
Uh, all done tonight, sir.
Yeah, you've, you've had the mic long enough, I think, so. Okay, uh, item number thirteen, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Does anyone have anything to report on any of those uh meetings? I don't think we've had any for a while, so, okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we will now move on then to item number fourteen, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. We'll start, start with Councilmember Viscar. Anything that you would like to discuss? Not on the agenda.
Actually, I think I missed a meeting or two last week, but I was having personal emergency with the family. So I will, I will make the ones that follow.
All right, no problem at all. We understand that. We're all, life goes on. There's no question about that. Um, Councilmember Mann?
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah, I I think um we've, you've sort of, excuse me, something come through. Yeah, I think you, um, Mayor Chavez, you alluded, alluded to a lot of the things that are going on um this nation. And I I just want to take a moment to, um, well, first of all, I do want to thank LA County Sheriff's Department, particularly Temple Station, for being so vigilant and and keeping our community safe, um and making sure that um our city is not the, that doesn't become a target for for vandalism or any other type of uh violence that we've been seeing on the news. Um, also want to thank our our residents for for a lot, a huge amount of outpouring that I've personally witnessed uh through various channels. I know there's a lot of anger, angst and frustration being felt by a lot of folks. Um, and I think we need to acknowledge that and and recognize that, that that is a, that is a challenge that um a lot of people face. And while I personally will not be able to relate to that on a personal experience level, um, but um I can certainly lend a year and listen and 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 hear, hear sort of what the protests are are really, are all about. Um, and, you know, I fully support people that are doing peaceful protests. I think that's in um all of our rights as as Americans. Um, but unfortunately, you know, we have folks that resort to violence that, you know, take things out of control. Um, and unfortunately, that just dilutes the message that um a lot of people are trying to have. Um, and you mentioned your invocation was very timely, that you mentioned that, that it's, it's, what we need is peaceful dialogue. Um, I think we're blessed as a city here in Temple City to be able to have that on on a lot of different levels. So I think our relationship with our first responders and law enforcement is very special. Uh, dare I say, unique in in that um we work very closely with them. They do understand our community. We, we support them and it's kind of symbiotic relationship that um has been successful for us on a local level. Um, I can only wish that somehow that is something that can be replicated throughout. And perhaps that's one small step towards um achieving the kind of justice that other people are are demanding for. Um, so I just want to say that that I I think it's important to empathize and and sympathize with those who are affected. Um, and let's just pray that, like you mentioned, I think, absolutely agree, it is a time for prayer. It's a time for prayer um to to find a a way forward that doesn't tear our communities apart that we've worked so hard to build. And um, heart goes out to um the businesses that that have been affected because, you know, there are a lot of mom and pop businesses that are kind of um under the radar. And someone pours their life sake, their lives work into a business that you have destroyed in a one night of violence. I think that's um, one of those stories hasn't really been been heard so much and and reported, but it's, it's just as important. I'm just thankful that um hopefully, knock on wood, that we, we don't have to, our, our small businesses here don't have to experience something like that. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for those words. I appreciate it. Uh, Mayor Protemu, any final comments?
Uh, thank, uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I echo what uh Councilmember Men said. Um, I I think uh, really want to uh thank, thank our sheriff department, uh Temple Street Station in particular, our department and city staff, uh city, city and manager who've been keeping track of everything that's happening around us, keeping our city safe. Uh, heart really goes out to all the people that um, that suffer through the uh civil unrest. I mean, again, you know, it it goes without saying, we uh definitely support peaceful protests. It's our basic right to uh petition our government, but there's really no place for violence, no place for um, for breakage of law and order. And um, I take exception to one of the looters' comments that uh peaceful uh demonstration doesn't yield result. And um, and then given the excuse for for the looter to loot, he said that's the only way we can uh um have people take notes. I personally feel that uh we, as a society, as a community, has evolved, we're much better than that. And we really need to hold ourselves to a higher standard. Um, too wrong doesn't make one right. Um, so um, and thank you again to all the first responder. Um, on the question that's uh, uh, street sweeping that uh, the Mr. City Attorney, uh City Manager at Florida, I thought when we discussed setting aside the overnight parking ordinance, we said that part we set aside, but the street sweeping part we still enforce. So maybe we should go back and look at that notes, um, that uh, uh, look at the notes of the council this. Um, and finally, I have a question. As I was driving around today going to work, I I noticed a lot of people, definitely more people on the street. Um, however, I also noticed a huge number not wearing their face coverings. And I know, I I I don't know how much um authority or if it's our business to enforce that, or is that only LA County that can uh, that can enforce or encourage people to be wearing face coverings? That's all the comments I have, Mr. City, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, you want to answer those questions?
Sure, uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll look back at the notes about the street sweeping and to clarify that. Uh, as it relates to the masks, uh, yes, that is, um, there is a talk about confusion sometimes in terms of what is mandatory and what is not. Uh, and what the, what the retailers have to do and what they don't have to do is, is the health order does uh require that if you are interacting with people in the public, that you are to wear a mask. Um, LA County Sheriff's Department um has been trying a gentle approach. to that enforcement, including in some cases, providing people with masks if they don't have them. Uh, the step beyond that, um, is it, uh, what kind of uh, adjudicatory authority do we have? That's, uh, I'd have to get back to you on that one. I, I don't have the answer to that, but generally it has fallen upon the Health Department to assist us with that, um, and the LA County Sheriff's Department to assist us with that.
Thank you. Um, Vince, I just just adjust that issue regarding the street sweeping. I, I remember that it did apply to both the overnight and street sweeping as well. I know what a lot of cities are doing uh, now is they are uh, sort of uh, coming back a little bit from that because more and more people are, are going back to work or at least appears to be. Uh, and even though they're still not enforcing overnight parking, they are enforcing uh, street sweeping and time limit parking. So that, I think that's something that the uh, city manager and I have discussed and probably come back to city council sooner than later. So I think we, we need to take a look at that, I think, again, so. Okay, um, just a couple of comments. Uh, of course, thank you all for uh, for all your discussion this evening, uh, good discussion, uh, you know, uh, difficult decisions to make. Um, you know, I, I, I look at the agenda and I think about what we talk about. And you know, it's uh, the decisions we make, even though they're on a smaller scale, local scale, of course, in the state, federal, uh, even the county, they're just as important, I think, and, and uh, and do come with it a great responsibility. So I thank all of you for putting in the time and, and uh, doing your homework and uh, and making those kind of comments that I think uh, help us to be the great community that we are. Uh, just to follow up on uh, Councilmember Mann's comments about our our community and the, how diverse it is. I think in today's world, I think that's a good um, a good example of uh, what can work, uh, when you have a diverse community and uh, and the people that make that up. And uh, you know, we don't look at necessarily skin color or uh, you know, we, we judge everybody on the same basis and and of course, I think that's the way it should be. Unfortunately, in today's world, it's not. And, and I think back, you know, in the news, a lot of it's been said about nineteen ninety-two. Uh, many of us remember that personally, of course, we were, we lived through it. Probably except for uh, Councilmember Mann and, and Mr. Murphy, they were just young kids at the time, but uh, you may probably remember it, but I can remember it very well. And uh, you know, it was uh, I, I truthfully never thought I would see it again. And here we are, you know, thirty years later and uh, it's like we're watching old news again. It's just, it's amazing.
Tom, can I interrupt just a second?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
I, I keep hearing that and I take exception to it because in the old, in the old guy in the group, I was, I was in the US Army National Guard in nineteen sixty-five when we had the, the first one, the Watts riots.
Well, yeah.
You guys didn't know there was a big riot in nineteen sixty-five.
Uh, well, I, I was, I was a young kid, but I remember that as well.
And that Councilmember Viscar, you were out there patrolling the streets then?
Yeah, and my first assignment was to, was to guard the uh, women's dorms at USC. So I was in, I was in a bush with a machine gun, but nobody gave us any bullets. So that was my.
That's probably a good thing.
It probably was.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's uh, it's difficult times, obviously. There's no question about it and uh, you know, all the remarks tonight, of course, uh, take that into account and uh, the sympathies and, and everything that go out to, of course, uh, all the first responders and of course, uh, uh, those, uh, you know, one of the great things about this country is that, you know, we have the right to, to do many things. We have freedoms that none of the countries have, but at the same time, you know, they're not, they can't go unchecked and, and uh, you know, we have to remember that uh, you know, uh, our freedoms don't necessarily mean uh, you have the right to, to loot stores and to burn buildings and things like that. That's you know, not the best way of getting things done. So um, obviously, our, our prayers and our thanks go out to, to all those who are helping and those who are, obviously, those who are protesting um, in the right way. You know, uh, through uh, uh, you know, doing, doing what, what they can uh, without violence. Uh, it's certainly the better way, I think. Um, now, just to kind of piggyback real quick, uh, you know, obviously, we're living in an ever-changing world and what, what happened last week, what happened yesterday, what happened two months ago, doesn't apply to today. Uh, none of us, I'm sure, I'm sure could have guessed that uh, this would be going on this, this long. And uh, you know, here we have uh, not only the pandemic to deal with, but now, of course, the civil unrest that we've seen the last few days that uh, probably is going to go on for a little bit longer, unfortunately. That leads me to um, our, my prior, our prior discussion, and that has to do with the use of fireworks in our city. I know that we have already approved permits for youth groups to, and, and other groups, nonprofits to have fireworks in the city. It's been a big part of our city for many, many years. Um, my concern of course is twofold. Uh, one concern, of course, is that the ability of these groups uh, uh, to uh, to make money. Obviously, for many of these groups, this is their big fundraiser for the year. Uh, however, um, we heard tonight from one of those groups that uh, they have questions about whether they are going to even be able to staff uh, these places and their concerns about the COVID as well. Um, I think, and I would like, and I think I, I, I guess I have the right to do as the mayor, to ask um, our city manager to put this issue on the next agenda to further discuss uh, how and if and when we're going to, uh, we're going to uh, move forward with the fireworks issue in our city. Uh, my concern is uh, with everything that's going on, do we have the um, facilities, do we have the manpower to uh, address the particular issues of fireworks, primarily illegal fireworks, of course, and everything else that's going on in our city? Fortunately, of course, we're not affected right now by the civil unrest, but we do know that our sheriffs are called out of our city to help with other areas. And so they are not in our city at the time. And so I would like a matter placed on the next agenda for discussion. And of course, if that discussion leaves the majority of the council to decide, yes, we will move forward and continue with the fireworks. At least the discussion, I hope, will at least flesh out what we need to do as a city, what our groups need to do as a city to make sure that these things are done safely and in a correct manner, and what type of help that they may need as well uh, to accomplish those things. And so um, if Mr. City Manager, if you could do that for us and Mr. City Attorney, you're probably gonna have to look into those things as well. Um, as mentioned earlier, I know there are many cities out there that don't have fireworks. There are many cities that do have fireworks. I know that uh, you know, a lot of the arguments, of course, have been that uh, this is a good way for our, our youth organizations to earn money, but and looking at the list of cities that, that do not allow fireworks, I just point out one, and that is the city of Glendora that does not allow fireworks of any type. They actually have one of the largest and most successful baseball and softball programs in Southern California. And apparently, they don't rely on the money they make from the um, from the fireworks or other ways to make money. So I'm just thinking, and, and again, I'm not talking about banning fireworks necessarily in the city. I'm just thinking we need to take perhaps another look at what we want to do this year. Uh, given the uh, things that are happening in our communities and whether or not that has an impact one way or another on our decision uh, to allow fireworks. So um, other than that, um, just want to tell everybody to stay safe out there, of course, and uh, you know, and again, echo my, echo the words of my fellow council members regarding uh, our first responders and the great job they're doing out there and to stay safe. So uh, with that, I will now move on to item number fifteen, additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. I will begin by asking our city clerk if there are any email requests for speaking on this item fifteen.
Mayor, there are no email requests.
Okay, then I would then ask you to unmute the microphones of those who are waiting online. And those of you who are on, waiting online to speak, we'll take this one speaker at a time. Uh, please announce your name and then uh, keep in mind that you have three minutes in which to uh, make your comments. So do we have anybody online that wishes to speak at this time? I hear some background noise, but I don't hear anything. Okay, okay, hearing, hearing nothing, hearing no public comments, I will close public comments. And with that, uh, we are adjourned for this evening. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. And again, stay safe, stay healthy, and uh, we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you.
Alright, take care.